And then you have to hit record to get it to start. It has to be not real close to that, so we could. I hope that nobody can't be too close to the other trucks. Yeah, they're so they're going to be requesting some. Because it wasn't written on the application, I didn't feel comfortable not having the permission to determine whether or not if the other uses were required. I think I'll probably speak with Chris well and explain what that means. Whether it was, everybody feels that's part was part of the same consensus, a consensus, because it's not, we know this is a new hearing. It's a clarification of the interpretation.
Hello? Hi, my name is Tom Vincent and I'm here with Susan Harland in connection with Mr. Haley's application for 379 Main Street, East Berlin.
Okay, thank you. The meeting has not begun yet. It will begin shortly. Just hang on for when it's called to order. When your item comes up, you'll hear it.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Christine's on the other. Which is our secretary.
Sorry, everybody. We're just waiting to see if we get a fourth for a minimum for quorum to be able to do the meeting tonight.
The messages.
He's not sure. Does she have the number card? She may be missing.
She says she has the packet.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Christine. I'm on the landline because I get bad service here at work on my, on my technology.
Okay, your numbers, you aren't coming up as attending, so well, don't break it down as attending.
Okay, you're, you're a little like marble in your mouth. I, I didn't quite get that. I'm gonna mute it, you know, just so you don't hear like feed, feedback noise, but you guys definitely can hear me, right?
Yes, yes, very well.
All right, I will mute myself now, so you don't hear background noise.
All right, folks, good evening. My name is Nelson Brassa, Vice Co-Chair for the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals, Acting Chair for this evening's meeting. As indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person meeting with remote access by Zoom, video and telephone conference. Remote meeting access was provided and posted on the town website for the commission members, applicants and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I would ask that you mute your device or phone if you are able to do so, so that we do not get any background noise. When it is time for individuals to speak, I will ask you to unmute your phone to identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, we ask that you be patient and wait your turn. Two very important reminders to everyone participating. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another so that everyone listening can hear what is being said and we have a clear recording for the record. For this reason, when it comes time for the board members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken, and then to vote on an agenda item, our Planner Maureen Doocy will call the role when necessary. As indicated on the agenda, public hearings will be heard for each application, with applicants presenting their requests and responding to questions. After the public hearings have concluded, we will go into regular meeting, which remains open to the public, but no new testimony can be given and the board will deliberate amongst ourselves. So we're clear on that? I want to announce that the public hearing for the variance application of Anita Bailey, 393 Main Street, East Berlin, has been postponed due to a notice effect. Interested parties may attend the rescheduled hearing, which may be determined tonight and will be properly published in the New Burton Herald and posted on town website and agenda. Also, and this meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website. Before I ask Maureen to take a roll call, I'd like everybody in the audience to know that the five is normally what we have up here or for voting. We only have a quorum of four, which is a quorum, but any no vote will be a non-pass, so there is no room for error. So if you don't want to be heard tonight, we need to know before the meeting starts. Good? Okay, I'm gonna ask Maureen to now take attendance by calling the role. Thank you.
Corey Whiteside. Sandra Capolo. Tony Frankvillaggio was excused. Nelson Brassa. Bunny Tubbs was also excused. Christine Mizada.
Present.
Ryan Zelik. I believe was anticipated being excused. And Hunter Mathina.
All right, I'm gonna start with Commission Business, number 2021-10. 2378 Berlin Turnpike, KMK Plumbing and Heating, Property Maintenance, speaking on behalf.
Hi, this is Karma Shparra. I'm with Ken Wallin, which is my client. He is interested in purchasing the property on the Berlin Turnpike. We have already been approved for one of his businesses to go into the facility, which is his plumbing business. However, he has a second business, which is the property management business. And that hadn't been approved to be added into the facility, so we are requesting for both properties to please be added to the facility so that he may go ahead and purchase and bring his companies into the town of Berlin.
Thank you. Any other?
Oh, yes, Chris, 240 Kensington Road, yes, a letter I had sent there essentially had said that the applicant had put in here the property management essentially would be in line with plumbing and heating, very small effect on site. Again, just looking to get your blessing for it was kind of an oversight as we went through the process. It's gonna be, they're essentially sister and run the businesses to each other, all moving from Middlefield to town and just looking for this commission's blessing for the town planner to sign off on this.
Any staff?
So, I can explain how I was trying to pull up the minutes from that meeting where the, the use was approved as a change of non-conforming use of the same or, or the rest character. I can't think of the word. A directional character. Thank you for that word. And so the applicant, when they came for some paperwork, were like, well, it doesn't say property management. I found it didn't say it on the agenda, or rather on the, on the application form. They had described it as the plumbing business. The letter from the brought into testimony from our economic development director did mention both businesses. There have been that. I don't recall if it was stated that it was both businesses or any description of the other business. So I did not feel I could bring it up because it wasn't on the application itself, but if it's interpreted as being inclusive of what his application was, that would be up to the board to, to determine the logical follow. I would imagine if there had been substantial conversation about it, or I would have suggested was what that means to changes in office, or will they have vehicles, equipments and other things that are different than what they could have for the point? And that's what would be the difference.
Yeah, and in the letter that you have essentially, but I'll just briefly just so you have it. KMK Property Maintenance is a sister company to KMK Plumbing and Heating will be also located at 2378 Berlin Turnpike. All of the work for KMK Property Management is done off-site at properties we oversee, not at 2378 Berlin Turnpike. Turnpike property is purely the home-based two businesses. Majority of equipment for KMK Property Maintenance stays at the condo properties we manage during the year. Any equipment that does come back to the property, including plow truck plows and enclosed trailer will be stored inside the existing building. The norm is that all equipment stays on-site under current multi-year maintenance agreements. But equipment does occasionally come back to 2378 Berlin Turnpike, and it does not store inside the building. We put a fence to enclose it, but the majority will be within the building. There is a lot of natural growth at the property, so there's little or no visibility to neighbors. And they are willing to put up a fence as needed, but they really want to be a good neighbor and locate here in Berlin.
So I would add to that, if they were wanting to do site changes, including installing a fence, they would make zoning approval and commercial property through the planning and zoning commission, it would be a site plan amendment, in most cases unless it was authorized to administratively handle it.
So more an oversight when it was filed.
When they decide that they have something outside, they would be subject to additional approvals.
Okay. Any questions from the question? Christine, any questions?
Did you say Christine? Hello?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do they, oh, they, they have a contract with the condo association to be the maintenance provider? Or do they, do they own the complex, or do they, do they do leasing or just the maintenance?
Actually, they own the entire property. The condo maintenance is off-site at other properties. It's not the property they're gonna occupy.
So, okay, you're a little, it's hard for me to hear. So, so they, they own the properties that they manage, or they manage for investors?
Manage for investors.
Okay, so are you, I mean, do you have, are you realtors? Do you do the leasing as well?
No, it is a, the first company is a plumbing and heating company, and the second is a property management company. So therefore, they are, they are leased, they go in and do all of the maintenance for other properties. They are not realtors.
They're a maintenance company, not, not a property management leasing company.
Exactly.
Okay, I understand, because I, I actually own a property management firm. So like, I, I'm like, I'm just trying to understand. So I get it. Totally clear now. Thank you.
Make a motion.
Well, it doesn't mean a motion. It needs more of a consensus that that's what you're doing, because this is a new public hearing for the item. It's, it's a direction to the staff that, that yes or no, that is not what you're attached on.
So we would take care of this now during the new business that we're just?
Yes, yes, please.
Do we have a vote?
I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I think they're looking to be good neighbors and I, I think it's fine. It was discussed, so.
Yes, I think the clarification to retroactive on the application is that the intention with the KMK Property Maintenance entity would be included in the variance or the approval of the non-conforming use.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes also, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Very good. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening. We appreciate your help and we are looking forward to moving into the town of Berlin.
Okay, moving on now. Application number 2021-16, 379 Main Street, East Berlin, map 23-2, block 152, lot 6. Ryan Haley, property owner, is requesting variances for northerly side yard of 27 feet when 30 feet is required, and a westerly front yard of 43 feet when 50 feet is required in the R43 zone per Berlin zoning regulations. For a two-story addition with a two-car garage on the east rear side of the house, existing non-conforming garage and lean-to to be removed. Speaking on behalf of the application.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Richard Pentor from Kensington, representing Ryan and Michelle Haley with regards to this application. I was telling Ryan that I think you all have a copy of this plan in front of you and probably not as good of a plan for variance as I've seen. They're actually removing a garage on the south or the left side of the property as you face it. That garage is entirely within the 30-foot side yard and that's gonna be removed. The house, the house is built in around 1770. So obviously, it's not set back 50 feet from the road. What they do plan is their addition, in order to connect the addition and the garage to the existing house, there is a little bit of area within the 50-foot setback, but I would almost argue that that really doesn't increase any non-conformity. It actually, it obviously doesn't put anything closer to the street. It's not going out to the sides. It's the only way that they can attach that addition to the back of the house. The garage actually at one point, in order to keep, maintain some of the lines of the property, there is a three-foot encroach, or a two-and-a-half foot encroachment. At one point, the narrowness is zero at the front of the garage. But again, they're taking away a garage that is entirely within this, within the 30-foot side yard that's been there for quite a long time. So you're really opening up that whole area between this house and the neighbor's house, pushing it all back. As you can see, there's quite a bit of architectural detail in these plans. My clients are architects also. You can see that they go up with a pretty impressive plan to keep the character of the house, you know, together. The, again, as I said, they'll utilize the existing driveway, but they will take away the garage that is in the side yard. So you're actually reducing the non-conformity by quite a bit by taking that garage away. And there's also, I think, a lean-to on the side of the building that actually also exists within the side yard that's also going away. As I said, this is about as nice of an application for something like this that I, that I can say that I've seen in a long time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hello?
Yes?
Yes. My name is Tom Vincent and I'm an attorney representing Dorothy Warren, whose residence abuts the applicant's property to the north. Is this an appropriate time for us to make comments?
No, that's fine.
Okay. With me is Susan Harland, Mrs. Warren's daughter, who's a resident of Berlin. We last appeared at the March ZBA meeting to oppose the applicant's applications for variances that would have allowed him to construct an oversized garage that would significantly expand an existing non-conformity entirely within the 30-foot side yard, abutting my client's residence. We recognize that the applicant's new applications are a significant improvement by addressing the concerns we expressed at the March ZBA meeting, by moving the proposed garage away from the northerly edge of his property. In the interim, the applicant is engaged in a dialogue with my client and me to, regarding the remaining concerns we have about the new proposal. And the theme for tonight is an old song, "Big Yellow Taxi" by Joni Mitchell. And the lyrics, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." And I'm, I recognize that the jurisdiction of the ZBA is not in the parking area and that will come down the road. But we just want to make the ZBA aware of four concerns that we've discussed with the applicant. We believe that two of them have been addressed. And two, the applicant understandably feels that it's premature to attempt to resolve them because the final design won't be known for some time and would be dependent on receiving, his receiving the ZBA approval. But the four concerns we have are the northerly line of the driveway and the turnaround area that we would like to see parallel to the property line as the existing driveway is and not running all the way to the property line in the northeast corner. The second is that because of the proximity of exactly what we, that's exactly what we're talking about, where the cursor is going right now. And in that area that you'll see the, the large paved area, which is considerably larger than the garage that is being torn down. Mrs. Warren has a den and an enclosed porch on the rear of her house. So her concern, our concern, is that her view may change from right now. As you can see, her view is behind the garage. So she has, I'll just say, a beautiful view of her neighbor's lovely property. And the concern is that view may become a view of a large paved area. And so we've approached the concept of having a wider buffer than is shown, somewhat along the lines of the buffer that's on the western part of the property just to the north of the existing driveway. And if that could be continued. And then, as is done oftentimes in commercial projects, the possibility of having some sort of a hedge or a buffer to, I'll just say soften the view of, of what might be a very large paved area. And then the last two concerns, one of which we believe has, has been addressed. And that is that just to the east of the, the plan that you see the plan that you see before you right now, in, you'll, there is a, a chain link fence that runs almost on the property line. And we've had discussions with Mr. Haley and he's, because east of what you can see right now, the chain link fence that Mr. Haley put up about five years ago encroaches on my client's property and the property behind her that belongs to an office park. I think it's twelve twenty-four Mill Street LLC. And it, that isn't contained. You can't see it in this drawing, but it was shown in Mr. Haley's application back in March. So it is part of the, I'll just say, public record from a prior hearing. And apparently, Mr. Haley entered into a written agreement with the town at the time that he received the fence permit or approval because there was no survey at that time. And the agreement was that if a survey were to indicate that any portion of the fence was on and abutters property, that he would relocate it at his expense. And he has acknowledged that there is encroachment and that he, it is his obligation to move the portions of the fence that are on my client's property. And the last item that we were concerned about is a good portion of the roof on the proposed garage and addition will slope to the north. And so when you add that drainage to the drainage from the paved area and then have the driveway and paved area, I'll say, running to my client's property, we wanted to make sure that there weren't drainage concerns. And Mr. Haley has assured us that, that the, he will make sure that the drainage does, does not run to the north to my client's property. Obviously, he needs to make sure that the drainage is away from his house and we want to make sure that it's away from Mrs. Warren's house and garage that you can see on the left-hand side of the drawing. And, and we were going to propose, if necessary, a curb if, if, if that's needed. But Mr. Haley assures us, what, whatever is, I'll just say, and, and will want him to obviously confirm that I haven't misspoken, but he, he said that he recognized our concerns and, and would make sure that the drainage didn't run on to Mrs. Warren's property. Now, I recognize that most, if not all of those items, I believe, are beyond the jurisdiction of the ZBA. And, and therefore, we are making these comments, but we are not opposing Mr. Haley's proposal. And in fact, we believe that it is a lovely improvement to, to a wonderful structure, historic structure in the neighborhood.
This is, this is Christine Mazada, and just forgive me. That, that was a lot of words. I think you said there were four things. I kind of caught three. Can you bullet point the four things for me quickly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The, the first one is we would like the northerly line of the driveway. That's on the left side of the di, the site plan that you're looking at. We'd like that buffer that exists, I'll say, where the, at the start of the old garage, which is from what we know to be somewhere between roughly two to four feet. We would like that buffer to continue and not have the paved area run right up against the property line. So that's the first thing. The second is the possibility of putting a fence or hedge along the paved area so that Mrs. Warren's view isn't of a parking lot. The third one is the possibility of, it's a concern about drainage and the possibility of, of putting a, a curb if it's needed to make sure that the drainage on the new addition and the paved area doesn't run on to Mrs. Warren's property. And the fourth is, is the fence that, that Mr. Haley would, I'll say, honor the agreement that he apparently has in writing with the town to relocate the, those portions of the fence that were constructed on abutters property.
So do we have a copy of that, that, that written agreement about that? I don't see this.
We, 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 Mr. Haley indicated that he didn't, he, he couldn't make commitments right now because he hasn't, because he doesn't have variances. He hasn't finally designed his property. So that's the, excuse me, hasn't finally designed the, the proposal, and that's the catch twenty-two that I and, and my client are in because we haven't been able to reach a written agreement with Mr. Haley about these things. That's why we're putting it on the public record.
Okay, I'm just confused. I thought you said that he did have in writing a prior agreement with the town.
Oh, no, no. The, the, he is, he has, my, my, I misunderstood your question. He has advised me that he entered into a written agreement with the town to relocate the property, uh, excuse me, the fence. The only thing is, I'll say, the, the survey was done in twenty twenty, so he's known about it for a year. There is an agreement apparently with the town that he'll relocate the fence, but it hasn't happened yet.
Chairman, if I may?
You may.
Okay, this is morning, I think town plan are talking. So typically with certificates of zoning compliance or fences, I did not call this one. I did not know this was an issue. I don't recall Adam discussing it during their last hearing. However, typically on our certificates of zoning compliance for fencing, if we haven't required a new survey because they've indicated there's pins or fences, we, you know, it's a lot of money to get a new survey for every fence if there's, if there is an indication of where the property line is or can be measured off existing structures, then, and matched up to a survey, the caveat on a certificate of zoning compliance states that if a subsequent survey finds that the fence ends up located in, in properly on and abutters property, then they will, and the person who got the fence is obligated to relocate it onto their own property. It's a caveat on the certificate of zoning compliance for a fence.
But I do understand the notes, but that's not what we're here for today. We're here to just figure out the side and rear setbacks of the building. That's all we're doing then.
I, I just wanted everyone to understand that.
I appreciate that.
The other, the other comment I make with regard to this is that, as, as you stated earlier, just to remind it for everyone, variances do require affirmative look-already and variances can have some conditions, can have conditions based on them as well. So just.
I did have a question regarding the driveway. With that, that turnaround kind of at the end, what was the purpose of pushing the driveway out that way rather than keeping it straight and maybe, you know, just versus, you know, having it bear off to that side?
So that the cars can back up, go out forward out to Main Street, I think. That's it. So they can back out, go forward out to Main Street.
Right, no, I understand that, but if you look at the design of the driveway, like from the back of where the current garage structure is, it goes closer to the property line. Is there a reason why it couldn't go, you know, straight and maybe keep that off of a couple of feet?
Well, I think it, it probably, it probably could. I don't think that that's, I mean, we could, we know we'll do what we can to, to be good neighbors. We certainly don't let it create water on the neighbor's property. That's certainly gonna be part of the design. I mean, if we, I'm sure if we can pull it away a few feet, I, I think Ryan's gonna fix it.
Well, that would be one of my questions, or, I mean, would it be a big deal to move that, you know, make that straight? I'm just asking. Just state your name.
Michelle Haley. Um, so our property line, if you look at it, it angles slightly back. And so keeping, we were keeping the existing line of our driveway and just pulling it back straight. And the distance that we have from the front of the garage where the garage doors are to where we're showing the edge of the driveway is a very minimal tight space. It's gonna be very tight to be able to back cars out of. And that's why we have the turnaround. And we didn't finalize the driveway because we didn't think that that was really something pertaining to more.
Yeah, I think the issue is just moving it in, you know, from what I can see, maybe a foot or two, I, off the, off the, the fence line, I think.
I mean, the turnaround maybe, you know, I'm sorry.
That, that would, that's just my only, you know, question.
The turnaround possibly could be slightly angled. I feel like that's something that we'd have to explore in the field once we're out there.
I know.
But the way it's drawn was solely because we just pulled back the, the line of our existing driveway so that we could have enough room to back out of the dri, out of the garage.
Orin, can you clarify, the driveway is part of the site plan. It has to be approved by the commission, not?
No, the, so, so for residential properties, single-family residential, they don't require site plan approval. The lots, new lots generally would have been approved through subdivision process. This probably is a pre-existing lot, but regardless, that's not part, not something the planning zoning commission sees. I will also clarify that zoning regulations, while we have setbacks for structures and patios, driveways are not subject to the setback requirements, so they can be up to the property line.
I was gonna be just asking to see about being neighborly and, and not having that headache. That would be a.
Right, right. But, but as far as the, the regulatory oversight of it, although, as I stated, conditions can be put on your approval of the related to the, the outside that strict adherence. But driveways, just as an example and for everyone's understanding as well, we have lots of shared driveways in town. They go up right up to the property line because the two neighbors drive up the same driveway. So we have a zero setback for driveways from a property line. There was one other thing said that I thought I should clarify for them.
I'm gonna quickly say one thing. What you said about being neighborly. We, we don't want our driveway to be on top of ours. So we, we do want, we've had a good relationship with Mrs. Warren for the eleven years we've lived there. And, and we don't want, you know, our driveway right up against here. So we do currently have large bushes and trees and the existing trees and bushes will remain. And once the driveway or outdoor are there, then we figured we would explore, you know, do we feel like we need taller bushes or fence or things like that. And so that's what we were saying. We can't really know until it's there. But we will be, we, we want to be neighborly. We don't want to encroach on her driveway or her views or, you know, anything like that because we have to look the same way, you know.
Well, sorry, because you, you were here in large, you've made significant changes. So I think that proves that, you know, it was safe.
I, I just recall my last comment was that drainage is regulated to not adversely affect the abutting property owners and that's part of the building.
Yeah.
Development is, that's a, right, so it's a regulation regulation. That you can't create cause runoff to go to your neighbor's property. So.
Do you have any more questions, anyone? Any, any more people in favor of the application? And denience of the application?
Opposition.
No, okay. Do I hear a motion to close this?
I'll make a motion to close this hearing.
Second. So done and passed. Next application. Number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, nope.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, sorry, yes. Twenty twenty-one seventeen, three fifty-nine four Rod Road, map fifteen dash one, block ninety-one, lot eighty-eight dash one. Melissa S. Harris, Stranger Stanfield Law LLC is requesting a variance for a gated fence height of six feet when three feet is allowed per zoning regulation four D seven for a rear lot in the R twenty-one zone. Owned by Teresa and Yashira Denardi, co-trustees, speaking for the application.
Yes, good evening, Board. My name is Melissa Harris from Stanford, Rock. I am here on behalf of the owner, Denardi, the Old Building Trust. With me tonight is one of the co-trustees, Teresa Denardi. This is our application for a variance of section four B seven to allow for my client to install a gate towards the end of her driveway. There are some visuals that have been included with the application. I'm a very visual person. I'm sure most of you are familiar with or Rod Road and have been down anywhere since. But what I have here, and, and I apologize because I know this is not as virtual right now, but I have some just kind of Google overviews that show the driveway from a aerial point of view as well as when you're driving down the road, which I think may also be helpful if I can share those with you as well.
Are those new ones?
They, they are.
Okay. So I was, are okay with not getting these back?
I am.
Okay.
I have one. So is this one of the views you have? Or do you have other views besides that?
They're, they look, they look, they're, the same, but not.
Right, the first one, then the rest are the same.
The, the first one I have, it's pulled back a little bit because I wanted to be able to show the proximity of the driveway to Winding Meadow Drive. The reason for the application is because over time, the driveway, as you can see, it, it accesses a rear lot and the driveway itself, or it turns right, so approximately a hundred and sixty feet, it's quite long. And it's also over thirty-one eight wide, so it's also quite wide. And what my client has been finding is a lot of people coming down her driveway and using it either as a turnaround or under the mistaken belief following their GPS possibly that they're turning down Winding Meadow Road. So there has been quite an influx of people coming down her driveway. And that's a problem not only for her, but it's a problem as well for her neighbors. As you can see to the north, we have three forty-five four Rod Road and then to the south we have three sixty-one four Rod Road. And the driveway goes right along the entire side yard of those properties. So they too are experiencing influx of people driving or not invited, driving up and down my client's driveway. So what we're proposing to do is we're proposing to install a typical driveway gate. And, oh, very good. Yes, thank you. So some of the views I provided you show kind of what the driveway looks like as you're driving down four Rod Road. And you'll see that the running properties next to the driveway are actually very close to the road. And as you're driving down, it, it could be easily mistaken for a road. It's very wide and it's very long. And it, it can't really tell that it just goes to my client's property. So someone who's not paying close attention. So someone who's not paying close enough attention, which a lot of people don't these days while they're driving, mistake it for a road. Or they know they can just go down there and turn around. So what we wanna do is we want to prevent that from happening. Um, right now, the regulations only allow for a three-foot gate. Um, and that's true for the entire length of my client's property because she's a rear lot. So we're seeking this variance. We think a six-foot gate is necessary. Why is it necessary? For a couple of reasons. Visibility purposes. If someone's driving down that road and that you need to be able to see a gate to know you can't turn down there. Again, I'm a visual person. A three-foot gate, we all know three feet, right? But if it's a gate at the end of the driveway, it does, it kind of also looks weird, right? It's really, and I I know that's not a reason for a variance. I know that the fact that it looks weird isn't a reason. But someone like me, I'm gonna step right over it. So it also isn't providing my client with any sort of safety purpose as well, um, to prevent crimes, break-ins that kind of going around the town and other towns right now. The gate is going to be installed by Giamano Fence Co. right here in Berlin. As you can see by the diagram, it's your standard iron gate. Um, there's not gonna be any issue with regard to visibility. And the main purpose for the regulations set forth in four B seven is is to allow visibility. This is not gonna be any sort of privacy fence or anything like that. You can see right through it. It's gonna open and shut. On each side, it's twelve feet. There's not gonna be any issue with regard to emergency personnel going in and out. And we've already contacted, um, the fire department, and, uh, we will be installing one of those Knox boxes. And that can certainly be a condition of the approval. We have no problem with that. And the location is going to go across the whole entire driveway. And at one point, it's approximately thirty-two feet from the road. And at another point, it's approximately thirty-five feet from the road. And if you take a look at, uh, some of the overviews and the drawings, you'll see that the location of the gate is actually behind the front yard setbacks for the two abiding properties. So it's really not going to, um, affect them at all. Um, and in fact, as you will see, we have letters of support from both of those property owners saying that they're all for this application and that this application, um, is beneficial to them because it provides safety with regard to their usage, if they're side lots and their rear lots as well. Of course, when we consider variance, we consider all of their required elements. What is the hardship here? I think what we have for a hardship is is what you see. Um, it's the fact that it's a rear lot. Um, it's the fact that we actually, under the regulations, pursuant to, um, pursuant to section five A ten, the minimum front yard requirement for the R twenty-one zone is forty feet. So technically, we can only have three-foot fence within forty feet, but add to that the fact that it's a rear lot, our our setback is actually hundred and sixty feet down the access by. So that in itself is a hardship. The other thing to think about, obviously, when it comes to variance is what the public safety and the welfare. And this is definitely a public safety and welfare concern. We need to get this gate there. We need it to be visible from the street. We need to prevent people from coming up and down there. A three-foot gate is just not gonna cut it. Um, the other thing that we consider when taking a look at an application for a variance is property values. My client takes very good care of her property. It's very well maintained. This gate is attractive looking. It will not only serve a purpose, but it will look well, look good there. And the safety, um, that it provides will only increase property values. Um, the other thing to also consider is, um, somewhat convenience. If you're shopping, if you're in the market for a driveway gate, they don't typically come in three feet. They come in six feet. It's standard. So that's what we're trying to do. Um, it's not contrary to any of the provisions set forth in the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I think, you know, this really meets what a variance is set forth for. Health, safety, welfare, um, properties coming together on board to get this thing done. I don't think I have anything else more to to say about it. Um, we do ask that the the board take this into consideration and that they do grant this variance so that we can get this installed and 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 prevent my client's use of her driveway.
Uh, question, I I know you probably had said it already, but how far off the street is the fence gonna be? Thirty-two feet approximately?
Yeah, so on one one side is thirty-two and on the other side is thirty-five.
The reason for the thirty-two feet off the street is?
Um, the the location where it is, if you take a look, that's where the, um, divider starts. So it's it's at the end of the divider.
So my question, just out of curiosity, would be if that whole fence is, obviously not for people not to go down the driveway and get that, but people can still turn in that thirty-two by thirty-foot spot?
Right.
They're still gonna turn in there?
I'm hoping that the visibility and the fact that the gates there will prevent them from doing that just just as much as it would prevent, just as much as they would turn around anywhere else. What is gonna stop them from doing is going all the way down the driveway, turn around and coming back out. Um, which is, which is the most dangerous part of what they're doing, uh, because, you know, you have children, people playing ball in the.
Well, I I I understand that. I'm just, I'm I'm just having a hard time understanding why that far off the street. Because it's still not gonna stop half of what you say the problem is.
Uh, is this something we can move closer even?
I think that's better.
Uh, you have to, you have to just sign it or at least send your name to the speaker so we can.
Introduce Teresa Denardi. And the co-trustees and president of the.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Denardi. Um, the fence guy just wanted it there so he could put a divider in the middle and each side go like this. I think it was that simple. Um, if I hit my car in, you're kind of just, you're at the fence right there, so you can't really turn around. You would have to pull back out and go. Like you're, you're doing a K-turn to get out. And he asked to put electrical to move the fence, and wanted to do it where the beginning of the aisle was, because there's lights there, and that's where all the electrical is.
Any other questions? Christine, you have any questions?
Nope, I do not. Thank you.
Steph, I mean, uh, Sandra, you have any questions?
No, I'm I'm just going back and forth between three feet versus six feet, but I can understand with the, um, wanting to try and catch attention of having it more unlevel than someone's in a vehicle versus.
Well, I I I I hear you. Steph, you have a question?
Sorry, distracted by the lightning behind your head.
No.
It just startled me. I didn't see it coming. I'm sorry. Um, I wanted to comment that there were two, the the two letters that were referred to. Yeah, in your, they were distributed in the packet. One was from three fifty-nine four rod road. One, uh, I mean, rather, this is three fifty-nine, sorry. One is for three sixty-one four rod road and the other for three forty-five four rod road. And I just brought up on the screen that they are these two lots on either side of the driveway. You know, sometimes we get letters that say they're the neighbor and they're, you know, ten houses away. So this, these, these are the addresses for those, um, they are in the packet, so it's not required to be ready to the record. Um, but, uh, they are in favor. Um, I'll say they're similar, we can figure, so I want to put those on the record. I have a question with regard to the gate and, um, just the variance was, as I read it for the gate itself and not to go the width of the property in that location. Am I correct in that, in your application? So it will just be the gate, the width of the driveway, not the width of the access strip, which it's.
Oh, correct, correct, yes, just that, right.
Just with pay.
Correct.
Right, right. On the gray, on this, um, on the GIS as opposed to the width of their lot at that location.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified. I have no comments. I think this is. Their package was very thorough.
Any other, uh, people in favor of the application that need to speak? And in opposition to the application? Do I hear a motion to close the application?
I will.
Uh, why I am going to be closed.
I'll second.
Closed.
You you just, they're, no one opposed? Say that, we're no one opposed.
No one opposed. That's tied up. Number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, one oh two Langdon Court, map nine dash one, block seventy-two, lot five. Rashawn Rankins is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval for a used car dealer license in the CG, uh, GC zone and Kensington Village District Village redevelopment area for Berlin zoning regulations, six F, three B, and fifteen A three, speaking for the application.
That's right, Rashawn Rankins, from Stottles, Berlin. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so we've been here for four years, um, we're telling, we're looking to sell a couple of cars. Just to add on to our business. That's pretty much it.
They're just gonna be sales or you're gonna be doing repairs as well, or?
Uh, no repairs. Uh, work out of deal with a couple of shops in the road. To my safety, I need, you know, money to keep it working, stuff like that, whatever.
I don't think it matters. I think if it's a car, it's automatically falls under repair also, doesn't it?
Yeah, so the the used car dealer licenses, um, I, but they, hold on. I'm going back to the DMV application, which is the purpose, the main purpose of the location approval going to the zoning board of appeals. Um, for the record, um, the location or the spec- a special permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission is also required for automobile uses in the GC district, which is like this is, um, general commercial, um, zone. And so therefore, it will also need to go through the zone of the, through the Planning and Zoning Commission for special permit approval. That will include site plan review. I'll move on to my comments in a second with regard to the site plan. But you can see by the motor vehicle dealer and repairer's license, a used car dealer is the type of license as opposed to a general repairer, limited repairer. However, used car dealers or any dealer does need a repair bag. And I believe that's right, the motor vehicle requires you to have a bag, so the bag.
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, with tools.
And so they coincide by dealers, they don't necessarily operate in the manner in which they utilize on their repair, um, what they're sanctioned to do by the state. However, if they get the license, they're allowed to do whatever that license encompasses. So this particular license is for the used car dealer to need license for this location. They're the detail shop currently, which I do not believe requires that. But this licensing facility does not apply to detail shop.
So you've been there for four years and have you been selling cars there now?
No, it's four year cars, cleaning cars. Things get a little slow, so I figured, pick up a couple of cars and try to sell them.
All right, so planning and zoning would determine number of spaces and s- it's centered that they need to use.
So, so generally, this board and for our review, we do look at the site, at the requirements per the the regulations for automobile locations, which is eleven R. We did find, uh, concern today with regard to that, um, do you wanna pass those out? So I just, enough for me to have one. I probably have one in the pile. Um, the eleven R in the zoning regulations are the automobile services. And the first section of that, I don't know if you all, we called it years ago, we, um, worked to, um, to rectify some things that were unclear in this regulation and reorganized it. Re-righted, but reorganized it. Um, the first section says the location of gasoline filling stations and including repair service facilities where repair shall be, um, permitted subject to approval of CBA. The customary retail sales as part of that, et cetera. This section does not specifically call out, um, auto sales, auto sales. It's customary related sales of of oil and stuff. So this section does not call out from a motor vehicle dealer's license. Um, and therefore, the interpretation of the, as, for the application from the applicant, possibly the former CEO, I'm not sure if they did meet before, um, before he left, was that this section of one through twelve, eleven, eleven would not apply because it doesn't say used dealers. When I went through it, when we went through it, um, earlier, we were concerned that the site itself doesn't meet those criteria. And then I had discussion with the applicant, and it's, so there may be some interpretation that was CBA may need to make as to whether these criteria apply. The the pre-existing location, the site, is only one hundred feet by fifty feet. And the criteria two says that the site shot a frontage of a hundred feet, so it does have that, it has that on Harding Street. But it does not have the hundred, the hundred-foot depth that this would require for the location of gasoline filling stations for repair or service facilities. It only has a fifty-foot depth. Then, and the second part of that, that, um, again, whether it's applicable or not, and it is also a pre-existing condition, condition is that the existing structure on the site, where the existing garage is, and if you look at the screen, I pulled up the aerial view, or not aerial view, the the GIS view. This one oh two building, labeled one oh two, is the building that's there. This, this building over here was removed already. That's part of the parking lot. So this building does not meet the required setbacks if the site was being designed near this, so, like I said, not.
Is the whole building your business or is there another business there?
There's another business on here.
So that would even be less.
Um, no, it's the buil- the building itself.
The building itself, itself, okay.
It's the structure itself, the criteria, and actually his portion of the building does meet at least, and, or rather, it's setback further from the front yard. It still neither meets the side, the whole building doesn't meet the side. North. It's the north setback. It does not meet the southeast or west setback. Trying, trying to get to the 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 plan view. Trying, trying to get to the, the plan view of the site. There we go. The building, it's, um, one building on the site is right up to the property lines. Um, and then, however, then if you, and I'm sorry for my choice. Then if you go on to eleven R, twelve is an applicable, that is all gasoline filling stations. Eleven R thirteen is the additional requirements for automobile dealers and repairers. Um, the first of which is basically the rules. Those are the rules that's, it's, you know, major repair work would be body and fender work, the sale of new or used motor vehicles and the display of thereof shall be permitted. So that's just a.
So if we okay this, any of that could end up on the property?
Um, not, and not if you contain it. You, you could have, um, you're approving what he's applying for, which is the used dealer. Yes, as he presented without.
Right, but that opens the door to everything else that comes with it once we approve it and then.
You don't have to come back.
Well, not that obviously we go in front of.
If you approved it for a limit, you could, you could approve a, a bit.
Just for sales and no repairs.
Well, he has to be allowed the repairs inside for that bag.
The repairs have to get the permit.
For the garage, but it could be, you, you could limit the, um.
Well, I'm, I'm.
I, I guess, I, I think it's outside.
I'm thinking the permit would overstep it.
Yeah, that, so if that is permitted by the license itself or required by the license, which is my suspicion is that the way that's worded is what they have to be able to do in the garage because you can't sell your veh, vehicles unless you can repair them.
Okay.
Um, that's my understanding of the motor vehicle law. I don't know that law very well, okay? Um, but they have, a dealer has to be able to repair.
Okay.
Um, or have the facility to repair. Um, the outdoor areas used for repair or storage of vehicles to be repaired shall be screened from the streets and adjoining properties. So, um, he is not proposing any stored vehicles for repair. He's proposing inventory. Um, some of you may or may not have been at the previous meetings when we discussed the difference between storage of vehicles versus inventory vehicles. There's a fine line there, the storage of vehicles to be repaired. He's presented, as I understand it, that no, and, and he should confirm, if you choose to have it, confirm it, that there will be no stored vehicles. There will be this inventory for sale and he's not repairing vehicles, he's not storing vehicles, because he's not doing that work other than his sales vehicles. Um, and then in order to reduce traffic hazard sufficient, unstructured space between the garage and the street line shall be required to enable vehicles approaching or leaving the public highway to do so safely. I believe that that will be appropriately reviewed by the planning and zoning commission during the site plan with the special permit because the, the applications to the planning and zoning commission get routed around to the other departments, including engineering and the police department. And they're the ones who can evaluate turning radiuses and traffic, um, concerns. And this, uh, the ZBA applications don't get routed to them for those, those actions. Um, and on that note, if you look at the site plan that's, uh, that it was submitted, the parking proposed and approved, so the plan without, if you take out the handwritten items, which is show cars, April hair, on say, um, customer parking and these words down here. The site plan itself is a site plan that was approved back in two thousand two thousand five, I believe. It was approved for the layout of this property with the building here and the spaces as laid out, they are on this drawn plan along the westerly property line. Um, if we then go to the aerial view currently, and bear with me for a second, I was on it. Four rod road. You'll see from the twenty nineteen aerial view that there are cars, the, the parking is not only here along the westerly side, but there's striping that traverses the property line along the easterly side of their property. Um, I would propose that should you be inclined to approve the application, that one of the, um, uh, a condition be considered that parking, striping and site improvements must comply with the site plan as approved by the planning and zoning commission. The reason I worded it that way as opposed to, uh, having you state that those parking spaces must be removed is that during the special permit and site plan process, the, that layout is subject to planning and zoning commission. We are reiterating this is or perhaps their site designer coming up with some other configuration or something otherwise provable by the zoning commission and that may therefore, so instead you have a condition.
I, I kind of would feel better if all those guys were already in a basket in front of us to make a decision.
So, so we, that's one of those you have to make. So determining whether the planning and zoning commission makes their decision on the special permit first or the zoning board of appeals on the location first. It's been historically about the, the zoning board of appeals makes the zoning, um, location approval first. And then if they can't meet the site plan requirements, then the, the planning and zoning commission handles the, the site design issues. Um, it's, it's a real, it's very hard for us to do.
I just feel like it's also from a really wide door for something that we have no control over after.
Um, again, why I would, would suggest that that be something that is subject to the site plan approval. So the existing site plan approval does not show parking here. So if, if it, it remains unchanged, that remains the existing site plan approval and those parking spaces have to be eliminated. The striping, the restructuring, you know, back to the site plan approval. The last approval by the planning and zoning commission shows no spaces here. While they exist on the pavement and therefore to be.
Was that, was that left off on purpose?
Um, far as what?
The parking.
Well, it's a hard part to the barriers.
You've only been there for four years.
Yeah.
And then the original site plan was from oh five, is that correct?
And he does not own the building. So, right, we, let's see, maybe we can see how our back though.
Oh, but this is not uncommon. We, we've done these cases where the, the use, the use of granting is subject to PCC site plan approval and compliance. I, I mean, I think I, I have three or four examples that I can remember, which have been recently, so. Christine, any comments?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
I, I do have a couple more comments. I just got lots to say today, sorry, but you didn't get my comments in advance either. So, um, I, should you move positively in favor, I would say, I would additionally recommend that, um, the conditions be specified on the approval because those conditions get put on to the thing that goes to the state, the paperwork that goes to the state lists out the conditions of approval. So while this is a no-brainer, it's something that by being on the state site plan, it helps. One of them, one of those comments being that the property must remain and, or the use must remain in compliance with the Berlin zoning regulations and this, and, um, applicable approvals, which would be the zoning board of appeals approval. Um, a maximum of four inventory cars must be, and that must be parked in accordance with the plan. So it must be, you know, they can't put them someplace else. The four cars in spaces as indicated can't be, um, displayed on the grass, say to the north or, or even in the unstriped spaces or, um, and that the parking, striping and site improvements must comply, as I just stated, must comply with the site plan as approved by the planning and zoning commission. Those would be the recommendations. Again, I would remind you that, um, I did want the board to consider the intent of the regulations for the automotive, automotive services and those requirements. Um, that the site, well, it's pre-existing site. Um, now, just for anyone who is on screen, this is the twenty sixteen aerial showing the parking space that the striping was installed by twenty sixteen, um, two thousand nine, it doesn't look like the parking was striped at all. So, just, just as background for discussing it. Go back to two thousand four, and we can't really tell what's going on, but it doesn't look like there was any stripe.
Quality wasn't as good.
No. Yeah, talk back to the twenty nineteen, actually, I think I'll jump back to this application now. And that's the layout of the application. If you want me to scroll to any other page, just let me know.
Okay. Or any other, um, words in favor of the application? Anybody in opposition to the application? Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Um, and can you make sure Christine can have her say out loud for the record that she has?
Christine, you have any more questions?
All set, thank you.
Okay.
I can't find the stop share. Can I then make a motion to close this hearing for Langdon Court?
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, moving back on to old business now. Okay. Application number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, three seven nine Main Street, East Berlin. You're all set, I'm sorry. Sorry, but it's something we need. Uh, three seventy-nine Main Street, East Berlin, map twenty-three dash two, block one fifty-two, lot six. Ryan Haley. Uh, do I have a motion to open this?
Motion. Well, there would be, did someone make a motion? I'm sorry, and I'll.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, bear with me, sorry.
So someone makes a motion to approve the application and then you have the discussion. Let's get seconded and then you have the discussion with regard to it. Um, and that motion, depending on the way the discussion leads, you can either withdraw the motion and we decide you don't wanna decide for the evening, or you then take the vote, a favorable vote of the board is required for variance applications if they vote.
All right, then I would make a motion for the approval, um, of the application for three seventy-nine Main Street, East Berlin.
I might add that the, when the motion's made, it's an appropriate timeframe, conditions of approval, or you can remake the motion after you've had some discussion with regard to what those conditions are made.
Correct, I was gonna ask now for, if there's any discussion on, on anybody's part on this, uh, motion.
I think the record showed that the, uh, the prior opposition, uh, has, uh, turned around. Uh, it's not posed the, uh, the attorney for the neighbor. And in fact, the statement was made that it was a lovely improvement over the last version. I share that view and, uh, think that on the table should be whether we even have purview to put conditions on here or the concerns that were brought up. I'm not sure that we do.
I have to agree with you, Corey, but I don't, I, I don't see a problem with this. Christine, I mean, Sandra, sorry. Uh, Christine, any words?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Um, Marie, can you call her, we'll call to the votes?
Give me one second. So I'm making one second of the motion.
Oh, I seconded the motion, sorry, I thought I did, I apologize.
You might have just not, it's the making procedure. Um, Sandra Capola.
I'm.
Nelson Grassa.
I.
Um, Christine Mizada.
Hi.
And Cory Whiteside.
I. Motion passed. Application number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, three fifty-nine four rod road, map fifteen dash one, block ninety-one, lot eighty-eight dash one. Do I hear the motion?
So I would make a motion of approval for the, uh, request for variance, uh, for a six-foot fence when three is allowed by zoning regulations.
I second. Motion made and seconded, any conversation, Christine?
No, all set, thank you.
What do you hear either, right?
Uh, the iteration here, that, that the fact made it for me that both neighbors are on board with this. Uh, I mean, it was a very thorough presentation from the counselor, uh, and the written presentation as well, but neighbors want this a little while.
I have to agree. All right.
Okay, so Sandra Capola.
I'm.
Um, Nelson Grassa.
I.
Christine Mizada.
I.
And Cory Whiteside.
I. Next, uh, next application, number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, one oh-two Langdon Court, map nine dash one, block twenty-seven, lot five. Do I hear a motion?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, but it's gonna be a long one.
Go ahead.
All right, I would make a motion, uh, for approval, um, with the following conditions, uh, that if the inventory is limited to those vehicles for sale and no storage of vehicles for repair. Um, that parking, striping, uh, and the site improvements must comply with Berlin, uh, Berlin. Okay, um, planning and zoning commission. And the third I would put on there is that, uh, there would be a maximum of four inventory cars to be full, uh, as noted on the site.
Second the motion. Um, I'm still having a big problem with this. I don't think this is a correct location for something like for car sales, to be quite honest with you guys. Um, my opinion, obviously. Uh, any other? Uh, based on the, the tight space, based on the tight space, based on, based, based on stats comments, uh, setbacks, the non-conforming structure, I just, I just don't think this is a great location for car sales.
I think a lot of it's gonna be resolved on the planning and zoning side. Um, I'm looking at as, you know, is it feasible to do it? Yeah, if you can meet all the other guidelines as planning and zoning would fit in there. I don't think you're gonna get someone coming off the street to purchase a vehicle based on the location of it, but advertise a couple of things. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, again, business is slowing down, you're trying to do something else, trying to, you know, reinvent yourself a little bit and, and, you know, help yourself succeed.
Christine, I mean, I keep doing that, sorry, Sandra. Uh, Sandra, I don't, I don't disagree with that, I just don't think that this is the right location. I, I, I don't disagree with any of that. I'd love to see him in a, in bigger and better even, just not in this location. That's just my opinion.
The use conforms to the zone. Believe that that was stated on the press test comments as well. Motion on the table is for subject to. Motion on the table is for subject to. Both ongoing Berlin zoning regulations and EDC site approval, compliance with their recommendations.
Right, I've just seen this happen many times where we open the door wide open and then, uh, even with, even with the right, even with the stipulations, it just never goes. It just never happens. Christine, you have anything to say?
Um. Not anything too intelligent, I, I just, I too am not feeling comfortable with this. Um, is it too late for them to withdraw the application and and have it, um, at at our next meeting? Is it too late for that?
Marie would have to answer that, I honestly don't.
Because I think I'd be more comfortable with that, like, I, I don't feel that I can make an intelligent decision on this right now, I just don't. I think they might be able to withdraw the application while you're deliberating, I can try to send a quick question to our attorney to check on that. Um, it's not.
Well, in fairness, in fairness, in fairness to the, to the application, I don't have a problem doing that either, I just, you know, as long as we're okay, but if there's a vote now.
But. But it can't be re. Um. It can't be reopened, you can't reopen a public hearing and have any further information or testimony or anyone else participate.
Correct. Correct.
Um, unless they're completely read into the record, um, at the next meeting for, for voting or whatever it would have to be. I don't even think he's still here.
He left.
Yeah, he left, so he would not be, I'm sorry, Christine, he left, so he would not be withdrawing it. Uh.
We have to take the votes, so we.
If he said. I can. Well, he can't withdraw, so he's not here to withdraw, so, um, you can, if, however, you do have time to decide. After a public hearing is closed, you have sixty five days to decide an item, you can. Gather new information, but you can review all the information and testimony you have, then, you know, you. Obviously, you work off what the regulations are, so that's part of your, your toolbox, uh, the regulations themselves, and you have sixty five days to decide a. So if you choose not to. Do so, you don't have to vote to the same back.
Well, if the majority of the commission here wants to, you know, do that, I'm fine with it, but I'd ra- I'd rather do it by a vote from us, informal or not, but that's what you guys wanna do.
You would be decided.
So let me clarify, if that is done, then the same four that heard the case would be the.
Are the only four that could vote on it again.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So do we take the vote today?
Unless, I, I believe you could find, like, you know, somebody else might.
Christine, you're not here, so.
We have, we have a record, but I, we would wanna verify that, um, just to make sure for challenges.
Sorry, Marie, uh, Kristen, I know you're not here, so do you feel more comfortable in waiting or do you wanna vote now, because it's still gonna be the four of us voting?
Christine? Are you asking me? Yes. Oh, I, I just, again, I mean, if I abstain, I mean, they need all four to pass, I just, I hate to deny people, I just don't feel I can make an intelligent decision on this one. Location approvals have a positive, I'm sorry.
It takes three to pass on location approvals, not four.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
I believe it takes three, uh, positive, three yes votes, not four on location approvals.
Okay, wonderful, then I'll abstain, perfect.
Okay, Marie, if you wanna take the vote, that's fine, if Kristen's gonna, if Kristen's gonna.
Um, okay, so Sandra Capola.
Hi.
Nelson Grassa.
Name.
Corey Whiteside.
Hi.
And Christine Mizada.
I have to abstain.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Yes. So I'm gonna close this out.
You give me one second to, to break that so that. I think it rises to tomorrow, but, because we can't approve it.
We can't, uh, I don't think we're gonna have enough people here to approve it, man, it's obvious.
It'll be a simple majority for minutes, so. Uh, no, you, you don't have, you don't have them for either one. Um, can there be any discussion, um, while I have a captive audience of the possibility of a special meeting for the, um.
I saw the email, I'm okay with that date personally, I'm fine with that date.
What was the date we were talking?
I believe it's the tenth, ninth or tenth.
I'd have to follow up my email.
Yeah, or he's got his calendar open, whatever day it is.
And I believe, I had proposed that it possibly be as early as five, but it could be, you know.
Will it be on Monday this time, is that what it was?
It's on Tuesday, still you wanted it, correct, that's why I thought I said the tenth.
Okay, tenth.
But I could be wrong.
I, I really have to put it back to say.
I'll do it for you, hold on a second.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Maybe I won't, he's not here anymore.
Yeah. Now you guys are the only ones on here, I can share my.
All right, eight nine, eight nine, and you proposed, uh, let's see, you said, uh. You can schedule one time here, uh, two. Meeting desire or in person hybrid promoting, be even prior to seven, I suggest five P M or later. Because I mean, if you'd be available for five P M on Monday, August ninth, our time on that date.
I'm sorry.
So I did say Monday.
Monday, then, August ninth.
Monday, August ninth.
At what time?
I proposed as early as five. Um, I prefer no later than seven.
The later the worse, man, that's a tougher day for me, but I, I think I can make it happen.
Yeah, I would be, I would be remote.
Yeah, if I did it, it would be remote, on Tuesday I could do it for sure, because I have coverage. But I have nobody there on Monday, I don't have anybody for Monday nights.
From five o'clock, it's works.
It could probably make it work.
Corey, you'd be remote?
Yeah, I would be remote for sure, but it's fifty fifty right now, I just have to find coverage.
Okay.
For me, it would be fifty fifty, I wouldn't know.
Christine, are you available on Monday? August ninth for a special meeting? Monday, August ninth, at, at, you said five P M, that would be better for me than Tuesday. Um, I, I still could do it Tuesday, I mean, I'm at work signing in now, so I could just do this again, so Monday or Tuesday will work for me. If I get consensus of remote, I could schedule it solely remote, like no one's here, you know, and, and the applicant doesn't have an issue with that.
Yeah. You would pick a. It's just that one item anyways, right?
Yeah, it was the one item, I, and I'm sorry for that, I just put them both in the same folder because they were both across from my spot. And I just put them in the same file folder and didn't realize I had two applications to notice, um, my mistake. Problem.
Okay, so I make a motion, please adjourn the meeting.
Second, okay, I'll try to make sure I get the consensus for the, or not for one, for the rest.
Thank you for the help and everything today, Christian. Sorry, guys, if this is a little slow, I might be, I might.
Did we get a, uh, motion to close and I'll end, sorry, you did the motion, did we get the second?
Second.
I think I did get, so, okay, okay, I'm sorry, so it's eight thirty six P M, and, yeah. Good night, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Good night, Kristen.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi.